Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Library Candidate Forum. Tonight, we have two Planning Board candidates, Steve and Matt. That is Matt Ray and Steve Gant and facilitator Brian Lennon, our member of our Select Board. So Brian, I'm going to let you take it away.
Great. Thank you, Lester and Martha, behind the scenes over here. Thank you very much to the library for conducting this very important evening. I know both of you are unopposed, however, this is still very important for us to get to know the candidates. And I appreciate you both being here tonight. So this is going to be about forty-five minutes. It's going to be Q and A, and we can be a little flexible with that depending on the issues we come across and things you'd like to discuss. And the audience certainly is, all of you are more than welcome to chime in as well. So I think we'll start, Steve, with you, if you can introduce yourself, telling us about who you are, what experiences you have that are relevant to the Planning Board and why you'd like to join the Planning Board.
Sure. Great. Thank you, Brian. Yes, so my name is Steve Gant. I've lived in Duxbury now for just about twenty-eight years. Live here with my wife and family. We have five kids. They've all come through the school system. And our youngest is a junior in high school right now, so we're almost empty nesters. We're getting there. I am a senior loan officer at the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. I've been there for almost eight years. So we do a lot of work with financing, development of affordable housing in Massachusetts. So that's got me in touch with a lot of planning, planning issues and planning matters throughout the state of Massachusetts. But what's really gotten me interested in running for Planning Board, I did run on successfully last year, but what's really whetted my appetite is I'm currently the Chair of the MBTA Communities Working Group. And that has really, really opened my eyes to the need for, you know, for really hands-on planning here in Duxbury. And it's opened my eyes as well. We've heard an awful lot about the unique character of Duxbury and the unique character of the town. I thought I knew what that meant. I know a lot better what that means now, having heard from the people and having worked in this group for that period of time. So that's why, yeah, that's my experience and that's why I wanted to join the Planning Board.
Thanks, Steve. Matt?
Sure. Thanks, Steve. My name is Matthew Wright. I live in Duxbury with my wife and two kids, not as many as five, and I'm on the opposite spectrum. We moved here in 2010, so it's been fifteen years already. Seems like we just moved in a couple of years ago. My oldest is a sophomore in high school and my youngest is in sixth grade at the middle school. Professionally, I'm an attorney, a partner with a law firm, Baudrillard-Chin-Dewey, in our Boston office. And I focus on commercial real estate and commercial lending, corporate finance. So it lends, my real estate background lends itself well to the Planning Board. In terms of Planning Board activities, I was appointed to, you know, to a term just under a year ago now for, that was one of the members that vacated. So I've been on the board now for about ten, ten or eleven months. And it's been eye-opening. I've enjoyed it. And that was the reason why I put papers into, for one of the open seats for a full five-year term. In terms of the, to Steve's, to Steve's point, there's a lot of material issues that are coming up in front of the Planning Board that will shape the landscape of the town and the future of this town. And, and, you know, they're not going to be easy issues, and I'm sure we'll talk about a few of them tonight. And it's nice to be able to give you some of my professional background in the real estate world to kind of give back to the town that has been great to us for fifteen years, that we love it here. And, you know, have a little bit of say and influence on, you know, a lot of these media issues that are kind of affect all of us over the next five to ten to twenty years. So I've enjoyed it. It's interesting through what I've seen over the last eleven months of the projects that come in front of the Planning Board and looking forward to seeing the next five years' worth of projects and see how the town evolves.
Well, thanks, Matt. And you hit the nail on the head with media issues because that's our next question. Yeah, so Duxbury is under a lot of pressure to implement the MBTA Communities Act and develop zoning to allow for development of seven-hundred-and-fifty multi-housing units. The special town meeting in December, Duxbury voters overwhelmingly voted down the recommended zoning changes. But we need to ensure we're in compliance with the Act because of the SJC ruling that said, you have to comply. In the meantime, the town's considering petitioning the courts under the state auditor's unfunded mandate option. In the end, though, Duxbury could lose access to significant grant funds if we don't go along with the state's requirements. I'd like to hear your thoughts on this complex issue. But we'll have to keep the discussion brief because we could talk about this all night, especially with Steve being the Chair. He might be at a bit of an unfair advantage on this one, but we'll start, Matt, with you.
I figured we'd turn it over to you and just let you roll with it, and I would just say everything Steve said. And just for the, for the audience, Steve is the Chair of the MBTA Zoning Communities Working Group. So he is intimately aware and on behalf of the Planning Boards come up in many of our meetings. They've done lion's share of work. I know that we were unsuccessful at the last special town meeting, but we've said this a few times at the Planning Board meetings, they have gone above. And Brian, I think you're on the.
I am, yeah.
The member of the group has done a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. And unfortunately, it's going to be even more my work on an even shorter compressed period of time. So with that said, yeah, I mean, the reality is the town spoke pretty clearly at the last special town meeting that they, they were not in favor of what we had proposed. With that said, since then, the SJC has come down and said, the law is valid. And if you don't want to comply, the town's going to have serious financial consequences. Yes, there is currently a lawsuit or a motion to potentially delay or, you know, ban our obligation to comply with the auditor's recent decision that's an unfunded mandate. But we don't know, we really don't know how the courts are going to, are going to decide that. And we need to, as a board and as a town, we need to plan that if, you know, we'll be overturned. And now we need to implement the MBTA Zoning Communities Act. So with that said, where do we stand? You know, we, as you will see, one of the lessons that we learned from the last go-around and we've talked on the Planning Board is we didn't get enough of the public's input when we were selecting the units. And Steve's going to talk about this, I'm sure, as well in his answer, when we selected the original sites. And in hindsight, we should have got more input from the town. But, you know, we were, you know, we didn't know what we didn't know. We'll put it that way. And we thought we were, had the best of, you know, we thought we proposed the best parcels that, you know, at the time, that made the most sense for the town and have the least, I guess, least impact, you know, while still getting towards the goal of the MBTA Zoning Act. However you feel about the Act, the intent of the Act was good. I mean, I don't think any of us can deny there needs to be more affordable multifamily housing in town. How the Act is laid out, I can't say that I think the state did a great job and kind of one-size-fits-all. I don't think that works, you know, when you compare a town like Duxbury versus a town like Milton versus a town like Hingham that has, you know, every town has its own characteristics. So I think it's hard to, to, to kind of paint a broad brush with the statute against all. But the law is the law now. We have to comply. And I think, you know, and I don't want to steal Steve's thunder because he's done so much work as the Chair of the group, but I think you'll see over the next month, a lot more outreach to the town to get more input. And I think the town needs to understand that we're, you know, if we don't comply, if we, if we shoot it down again, there will be significant financial repercussions to the town in terms of withdrawal of grants. And, you know, without naming towns, this issue came up on Monday's Planning Board, and there's a couple of towns that did not pass the MBTA Zoning Act originally, just like Duxbury did, but then chose to remain non-compliant and not submit an action plan by February, I think, thirteenth or fourteenth was the date. And they've lost grant money from the state since then. So this is not without teeth at this point. So I think, I think, you know, it's a hot button item. I don't want to talk too much about it. As you said, Brian, we could be here all night talking about this issue. And frankly, the two gentlemen on either side of me know more about this than I do, even being on the Planning Board for being in the working group. And they could, they could, you know, espouse more facts and information than I can. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Steve, because Steve has, if there's someone you want to talk to on this issue, you know, as the Chair of the working group and in your role at Mass Housing, I mean, there's a spot, issue number one for you.
Yes. Before Steve goes, I just want to clarify one thing for those at home. Duxbury is currently in compliance.
That's right.
There are some towns that are not in compliance. So I want to alleviate any fears that, you know, we're currently in the crosshairs of the Commonwealth. We are not. But we're being proactive with our, with some litigation. Steve?
Great. Thank you, Brian. Actually, interim compliance, I guess, is probably the better way to put it.
Sure.
Because what we're doing is we're working toward a fully compliant posture, hopefully, when we get to, when we get to June. I agree with absolutely everything Matt said. You know, Matt was hitting on a lot of the key, important topics. I did want to embellish on one thing Matt said because I think it's important. Matt touched on the fact that, you know, one of the, one of the issues that we had the last time was we didn't do a sufficient amount of public outreach. And it was really kind of the sequencing of the outreach that we were doing as well. When we did this last time, we had a couple of sites, we had two primary sites in mind, kind of from the get-go, that we were looking to put forward and put before the, you know, put before the town for them to consider and comment on and then ultimately vote on. That clearly did not go over very well. So part of our strategy right now is we are actually reaching out to the town. And we are saying, you know, we have a number of other sites, you know, possible sites in mind that we'd like you to consider as possibilities for compliance. We want your input on, on these sites. We want you to share with us your thoughts on sites that we may not have considered and why you think those might work. Because those could certainly be sites that are possibly, you know, considerations for what we put before the town for vote. So that, I think, is clearly important. And that was my fault as much as anybody else's that we took the approach last time. We learned that lesson and we're doing it differently this time. So with that, and then, so that was the first thing. The second thing is, we also understood that the message that we got is that there's not a great deal of appetite right now for dense development, dense multifamily development in town. The requirement is that the, we zone these fifty acres with fifteen units per acre density. So that's how you get to the seven-fifty. So what we're doing right now is, the state allows us to do this. Where a lot of the sites we're proposing for people's consideration is, we're proposing sites that are already developed. They have some level of density already associated with them so that they would be less likely to be developed, at least in the near term. And so we were, you know, we're projecting that that's something that would probably be more receptive to voters. But once again, we're doing the public outreach. We want to hear from them. And, you know, we'll, we'll see how they, how they react to that. But so, but Matt laid out a lot of everything that I was going to say, so that makes sense. But I did just want to focus on those two other aspects of it.
Thanks, Steve. And remaining with the topic of housing, the next couple of questions are going to surround that issue. Steve, do you think we need more housing in town? And should we be focusing on meeting the town's affordable housing requirements? Or should we be putting our efforts into supporting efforts to housing diversity that allows smaller lots and smaller homes? How do you approach this and what do you think the Planning Board's role should be for these changes?
Sure. Well, you worded it as an "or", I think it's an "and". I think we need to be focused on, on the affordability mandate that the state has before us. And I think by that you mean, right now, Duxbury subsidized housing inventory. We'll refer to that as the SHI. Our housing inventory is somewhere right around a little bit below seven-and-a-half percent. We would need to get to a housing, subsidized housing inventory of at least ten percent in order to be able to avoid having forty-B projects imposed on us. Once you get to ten percent, that's something that we can avoid, and we're not there yet. So we're still susceptible to that. So I think what we need to do, but so coming back to the question, Brian, I think we do need to focus on developing more, more affordable housing in Duxbury, but we need to be very careful about how we do that. I'll bring the MBTA Communities in just very briefly. You know, part of the plan that we have there is at least ten percent of the units that we would be, that we'd be permitting under the MBTA Communities zoning bylaw that we would implement, at least ten percent of those units would have to be affordable. That would help us at least tread water with regard to a subsidized housing inventory. So there's that. But we need to go beyond that, I think. Because, so here, what I would be looking for would be, we need to consider permitting more less-dense multifamily development than, you know, right now, the MBTA Communities is fifteen acres. That's too high. We can't do, in terms of what we control ourselves, we cannot be doing fifteen units per acre in town unless we're actually compelled to do. So I think multifamily development at a much lower density, I think, would be, you know, would be preferable in the town of Duxbury. Exactly where? Once again, we need a lot of input from the town if we're going to be doing that. And so there needs to be a lot of engagement. So there's that. We need to look at what kind of, what kind of housing we want that to be. I think it should be a mix of family housing. It should be a mix of restricted, restricted senior housing as well. So I think we, we need some of that. We need some of that also. So the Planning Boards are all in that. We need to start to, start thinking about what would, what would the rules for that look like? That's right in the Planning Board's wheelhouse. So we need to start developing kind of the framework for what that type of, what that, what that type of effort would look like. So that's, those are my, those are my thoughts there.
Matt? Yeah, awesome. Thanks, Steve. One of the things I've become aware of in sitting on the board for the last time, one of the big issues facing Duxbury, and it's not unique to Duxbury, it is, we have an aging population. There's a lot of seniors that have beautiful, big homes that frankly, they either don't want to live in such a big home or, you know, but they would like to stay in, you know, you know, they'd like to downsize. But there's very limited options as to where they can, where they can do that. And it's not going to be an easy fix, but it is something that we can't ignore. You know, it's been brought in front of the Planning Board, and it was in Envision Duxbury. There's been, the, the agent on, Council on Aging has come forth and did a presentation. There's, there's definitely a need in Duxbury and a want among the seniors to be able to stay in town, but maybe downsize. And right now, those options are limited. So now, the competing side, you mentioned in your question, downsizing lot size and smaller homes. The other competing aspect of that is, I think we'll all agree, a lot of the, what, what gives the town its character is we have almost a minimum, an acre minimum zoning. And not so much the house size, but the land size. It's, it's the nice rural, you look out and you have woods or you have a pond or you have a cranberry bog. And, you know, for someone like myself, I grew up in Massachusetts, but in a more densely populated town. Not terribly dense, but we've been down in fifteen years. When I go back and see my parents and my, my brother and his wife live in the town I grew up, everything feels on top of each other. And it's not, they're nowhere close to being on top of it. It's a very nice suburb town, but having been in Duxbury now fifteen years, we, I think we take for granted sometimes the bigger, the value of the bigger lots now. And I, and I think people like that. And I think it adds to the fabric of the town. And, and part of what makes it, you know, gives it the rural feeling that came up. The rural feeling came up throughout that Envision Duxbury was one of the characteristics that people highly value in town. Now, with that said, how do we, how do we, how do we balance that versus being able to get more multifamily housing in town? It's not an easy answer. Yes, a hundred percent, as you said, Steve, we need to increase our multifamily to get up from that seven-and-a-half to ten percent to try and have some control of the fortyBs. But we also need to zone more for multifamily, whether it's condominiums, townhouses, and stuff like that, where, you know, whether it's age restricted, fifty-five plus, or whether it's, you know, more of affordable housing. It's not, it's not going to be easy to do, but I think the message has been, I can say at least from the Planning Board, the message has been received and we've started to have discussions as to what type of changes we could potentially look at over the next year or two on the zoning, for the zoning bylaw in town that will allow for more inclusionary housing and more multifamily. So I think there's, there's no escaping the issue. We need to be able to permit building of multifamily or condominium units that are at more of an affordable level for the seniors who want to stay in town and could move out of their houses. And, you know, whether that, you know, I don't think we're talking fortyB, but we're talking, you know, condominium units. And I think the town would be well-served to start to get some of those developments in there. While keeping, I would say, I, my preference would be to keep the acreage on the zoning side for, for, you know, single-family homes. Because I do think that also adds into the fabric of the town.
Both very thoughtful and careful answers.
Yeah.
This is a difficult issue. It's something that's been talked about for some time. And it's easy, in a way, to kick the can. And Matt, as you point out, the demographics are what they are.
Yeah.
And, and it's incumbent upon the town to serve the needs of its residents. So those are great answers, both of you. Keeping with, Matt, what you just said, housing options.
Yeah.
One new option is an accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
And that's, unlike MBTA, this is for the entire Commonwealth. It's not just focused on one-hundred-and-seventy-seven towns around Boston. What are your thoughts on the state's recent law allowing ADUs or accessory dwelling units by right? And what should the Planning Board be doing to allow for the implementation of the statute? Matt, we'll just continue here.
No, this is a hot topic as well and was just discussed at Monday's Planning Board meeting. And Steve was there as well in the audience, and so, you know, he can also chime in on this. You know, for our audience members and whoever's on Zoom, you know, to Brian's point, accessory dwelling units are now a law in Massachusetts. It's not a per-town basis. It's, it's as of right throughout the Commonwealth. The law has gone into effect within the last month. And what it allows for is a secondary structure on your property. Now, it is limited in size to the greater, to the lesser of, I'm sorry, nine-hundred square feet or half of the existing square footage in your house. So for instance, if you had a two-thousand-square-foot home, your ADU, your accessory dwelling unit could not exceed nine-hundred square feet. And it has to have a kitchen and a separate entrance and exit. And, no, that's all good. I think that is great, especially for, you know, I can just say from my immediate family, I don't, my parents don't live in Duxbury. But my grandmother lives with my parents in the same house. And, you know, if they had the space and had an accessory dwelling unit, and she could have her own separate building and that has a kitchen and an exit and entrance, it's great, I think. And I do think it's an attractive option for people whose families may have their parents living with them in town and under the same roof, if you have the acreage on your property to put the ADU on. Now, with that all said, I'm all in favor of the law. However, the law does leave a lot of open-endedness, meaning, and that is what the Planning Board is working to draft a zoning amendment, which would still retain some control at the town level in terms of design review. Because one of the concerns that was raised at Monday's meeting is you could have a mobile home manufacturer just crank out nine-hundred-square-foot buildings that don't fit into the fabric of this town, don't fit the, the, the architecture of the existing house on the, on the plot and just plop them along. And they could make a killing doing that. But that would not look very good. It would not fit into the fabric of Duxbury. You know, and, and not to hit on the, I don't want to open a can of worms, but there's also a short-term rental issue that we were talking about earlier before we started the meeting. And one of, that's also one of the topics on the ADUs that the Planning Board is discussing in a zoning amendment is to get, you know, so the, so the town can retain some control over short-term rental units so that these ADUs, which I don't think, given the nature of the town, I don't think it would be widespread. But you want to not, we, I think the town's spoken, we want to kind of restrain these ADUs turning over on a weekly basis, you know, as, as maybe a key property would do. So, you know, I will sum it up in that the ADU statute, I think, is, is well, is needed. I think it'll be beneficial for the town. But I also think the zoning amendment that the Planning Board's working on is also equally as important because it will retain our control for, to review and approve the type of structure that is going on from an architecture perspective, that also needs to hit the, you know, maintain the septic requirements in town. And then, you know, and also restrain the owners of these ADUs from renting them out on a weekly basis to people who maybe aren't related or, or, forget whether they're related or not, but just so they're not turning over on a, on a high-frequency basis. So I do think if we can get the zoning amendment passed on the ADU in combination with the law, I think it will be a good thing to help alleviate some of that pressure that we, that we do see in town for maybe affordable alternative housing for seniors, or maybe not even just seniors, just other folks, maybe a young family that wants to come into town and wants to get their foot in the door from, on a rental basis. So.
Steve, your thoughts on accessory dwelling units?
Yes, Matt hit just about everything. You know, the state mandate, of course, that's something that we didn't have direct control over. So this is something that's being imposed on us. The sense that I have is that there is really a demand in town, in Duxbury, for, you know, for more accessory dwelling units. Ideally, we would have been able to control that ourselves. We would have taken the initiative and done that without the imposition of the state mandate. But here we are. You know, Matt hit on a lot of the points, I guess, among just a couple of the, a couple of the other items that we want to, we want to think about. Right now, the town of Duxbury is, we're, we're in this interstitial period between when the law became effective and when our bylaw, we anticipate, would be passed at special town meeting. So we have a measure of exposure right now that we're trying to manage, that our building inspector is trying to manage, which is, it puts us in a difficult spot. But at the same time, you know, we can see the goal in sight. And we want to have as much control as we can over things like design standards for the accessory dwelling units, over things like short-term rentals. Absolutely. That was something that was, that was talked about on Monday night. I, you know, Brian said it all. I just, I'm sorry, Brian. Matt said it all. I don't want to be repeating a lot of that, but other than to say, you know, I've been to a couple of the meetings where this has been discussed, the Planning Board meetings. I've talked with Amy Russell about this. I'm impressed with the work that the Planning Board has done so far. They've been very thoughtful. They've been very thorough. Amy is deeply experienced with this. She's providing us with excellent counsel and guidance. She's central to drafting the bylaw. I'm very pleased with how things have gone. I think the residents of the town of Duxbury are something to look forward to when they're going to be voting in June on this particular bylaw.
Thank you. Yeah. Steve, the town around 2019, 2020, through the Planning Board, developed a comprehensive plan, which we called Envision Duxbury. For those at home, it's available still on the town's website at the top banner. For those at home, it's available still on the town's website at the top banner. An initiative that's very close to my heart. When I was serving on the planning board, something that we worked hard to put into place and so many volunteers participated in making it happen. But we don't want it to be just a document on a shelf. That would be the worst thing in the world. And I realize we're without a full-time planner with that constraint in mind. Again, starting with Steve, can you share your thoughts about Envision Duxbury as to how we should go about implementing it? Again, with the constraint of not having a planner?
Sure. There are many different facets to the Envision Duxbury plan. I'll probably just focus on a few of the key items on there. One of them is housing, we've kind of touched on that, so, you know, some more, you know, some density, not dense, but lower density multifamily housing. That's part of what, in a sense, what the Envision Duxbury plan calls for. So, I think that's, and I talked a little bit about how we might want to, we might want to implement that. Another issue that they talked about in the Envision Duxbury plan is resiliency, climate resiliency. A critical factor, particularly given the coastline that Duxbury has. That's going to be something that's critical for us to be able to manage. That's also something that falls right into where the planning board is with the commercial that we have exposed, particularly in Snug Harbor, historic assets that we have all along the coast. And it's not just along the coast, of course. This is all throughout town where we have resilience that we have to build in. So, it's really incumbent upon the planning board to really drive some plans for how we can facilitate these, particularly these property owners, these commercial businesses, for them to develop the resiliency that they need because of rising sea levels especially and more intense storms. So, that's a key part of, I think, implementing the Envision Duxbury plan. Enabling the construction of housing over existing commercial. This goes to where you're working on the Halls Corner Working Group. I think that's absolutely something that we need to be considering. We've already got some form of, you know, non-single acre, single-family development. We've got a bit of that in town. We should be leveraging that to the greatest extent we can and being able to put housing over that where it makes sense and where it's feasible with regard to existing infrastructure and things of that sort. So, that's absolutely something else that we need to be focused on. And the planning board needs to be working closely with, in particular, the Halls Corner Working Group to see if we can get that, see if we can get something going there, particularly in Halls Corner. And then in other commercial districts, you know, Millbrook and others throughout town. So, those are, I think those are a few of the areas that, you know, that I'd really want to focus on with regard to Envision Duxbury and getting that implemented.
Thanks, Steve. And Matt, before you continue or before you answer this question, I just want to clarify or add that Envision Duxbury is pretty broad and we're only talking about things that the planning board can necessarily have. And that's what you hit upon, Steve, is things that the planning board can have some direct influence on. I wouldn't expect you guys to be going after historic preservation or recreation, that sort of thing. But it is, you're looking at it in the lens of the overall look and feel of the town, the character, as you guys have mentioned. So, with that in mind, Matt, your thoughts on implementing Envision Duxbury?
Yeah, I'll take, you know, Steve hit on all very valid points, some of which I would mention. And another one that I'll take a little bit of an alternative view on this is, or an aspect of it. We, I don't know if we were all at town meeting on Saturday, but the issue came up, Brian, as you well know, of an assistant town planning. That was one of the hot button items when we were talking about the budget, the alternate budget with the override. You know, and the people are both, are on either sides of it. But I think, having served on the planning board for the last year, I think if everybody could go to a couple of planning board meetings and see the issues that are going to be coming down the town's pike and at the planning board level for the next five to 10 years, they may feel differently if they're against hiring a second, pardon, you know, a second assistant planner. Because there are a lot of, there's going to be a lot of issues at the planning board that's going to need to address under this Envision Duxbury. And I know you asked at the beginning, Brian, you know, with the lack of a full-time planner. It makes it difficult. We do have an interim planner now. And hopefully, you know, at least from my selfish perspective, that path, the override passes for that one own purpose, is that we could have the resources to fill a permanent planner role and hopefully, you know, a secondary planning position because there's a lot of legwork and due diligence that needs to be done. And, you know, I think this was raised on Saturday, tell me, by having that second planner, he or she could work on grant applications that may bring in some money for the town. The interim planner does not have the resources to even explore grant money that the town could be looking at. So, a little bit of a different aspect to the question, but I do want to get back to the plant, you know, not having a full-time planner. Not a lot more to add to Steve's answer. I think he hit on a lot of them. I think the big one, wherever you stand on climate change, the sea level's rising. I don't, I think that's a non-disputable fact and we live on the ocean. So, all you have to do is drive down to Millbrook or by, you know, Bayside and see the flooding coming up the street out of big rain. It's going to need to be addressed. And that was a huge comment throughout Envision Duxbury. That is going to be, whether it's zoning changes or planning changes, it's going to need to be a hot button item in the next five, 10, 15 years that the planning board's going to need to address with the CBA, with the Board of Selectmen, and that's going to be a hot button item. And then I know we're not going to get into recreation, but there's a dual mandate that are somewhat conflicting. Hundred percent, we need more affordable housing in town and we need options for the aging population to stay in town. But if you look at Envision Duxbury, another one of the higher ranked was our rural and our open space. You know, and the conservation land. That's what a lot of the folks love about living here. So, we have to, on the planning board, we're going to have to figure out a way to to increase the zone, you know, increase the development, but retain the open space and the rural feel. And it's, I think it's going to be done, but it'll be an interesting balance. And that, you know, I don't want to keep going over, repeating what Steve said, but those were two of the bigger issues on Envision Duxbury. So, I think with more planning resources, they're going to be needed over the next, you know, decade or so as we address some of these issues that the town's going to face.
Thanks, Matt. A great perspective, both of you on that question. Let's shift a little bit now to talk about the nuts and bolts of actually serving. As you know, planning board, maybe the folks at home are aware of how busy the planning board is and how often it meets and how much work you actually do outside of the meetings. There's the, just the prep for the meetings can take, you know, the weekend before, before your meeting. So, I'd like to ask a little bit about what your expectations are in terms of serving in the role, but more particularly, how you're able to balance the other demands on your time to serve. This is public service, you're volunteers, which we sincerely appreciate. But to really be effective in the role, it's important that the individual serving in the role be there, be engaged, advocate as necessary and really be a part of the board, not just somebody who just shows up or not, as the case may be. So, the question is, what are the obligations that you would have on your time otherwise? You don't have to go into great detail about, you know, all the things you do in your real life. But how are you able to balance the other demands on your time in order to serve effectively in a long-term role? And Matt, in your case, a full-term on the planning board is five years. And Steve, you're running for the unexpired term of, is it two years? Okay. And then, assuming you are elected and choose to run again, then you would have your own five-year term. So, I can tell you personally, it goes fast. However, you know, five years is a long time to commit, especially when you're in the midst of professional and personal lives. So, starting with Matt, I'll just ask, and you've had a year to sort of balance that out. Maybe you can share some thoughts on that.
Yeah, it's been eye-opening for the first 10 months as to how much work you, it does entail. You know, when you were running and then being appointed, you look at the issues conceptually, but you don't realize the nuts and bolts of what it entails until you serve on the board. And Steve, while it may not be on the board, he attends many of our meetings. So, he knows you are, you have familiarity as to what goes into the board meeting. Someone from myself, I, you know, outside of the board, I've got a busy legal practice that takes up a good amount of my time, as Brian can, you know, as a fellow attorney, you understand. I mean, it's a demanding career. I've got two kids in the school system and I have a wife that works and and two dogs, one of which is a six-month-old golden retriever pup. So, it's a busy household. It's a busy household. So, we are running around and I don't think we'd have it any other way. But it is, yeah, it takes time. So, I can say we meet every other Monday. So, it's twice a month or, you know, yeah, twice a month usually. And the materials get submitted to the members, I would say, three to four days, sometimes a week in advance of the meeting. And it's incumbent, and I think you'll see by going to meet, I can say, having been served on it now, every member on the board comes prepared to the meetings. And what I mean by that is, we've all reviewed all of the documentations we get before we get there. And it assists with the discussion and the review. I don't think the planning board meetings would run as efficiently as they do if we all just printed them out two minutes before we went to the meeting and none of us were up to date with what was on the agenda. What does that mean? Yeah, it means that, you know, a night or two, I've got to spend a couple of extra hours reading through plans or memorandums from town council or, you know, supporting engineer reports and stuff like that, or I'll do it on the weekend. For me, it's, yeah, I enjoy it because I have the commercial real estate attorney background. So, it dovetails into my everyday practice anyway. So, I find it interesting to dig into some of the topics. And we all volunteered to serve, so I think we knew what we were getting up to. And, you know, and lastly, I think there's some pressure. You don't want to be the board member who shows up and not prepared to engage or engage with the residents or the applicants who are in front of you. So, you know, maybe that's my own self-int internal pressure, but I don't want to be the board member who hasn't read anything before I stepped in the door and every, you know, the other four or five board members on the planning board are well-versed on it. And everybody on the board now is professional, is very smart and we have some engaging conversations. And it is a time commitment, but it's one that I've enjoyed, you know. And that's why I took out the papers to run for a full term. Having gotten the exposure for the 10 months, I've enjoyed it. So, I'll leave it at that.
All right.
Thank you. Yes. So, I certainly understand the commitment that's involved with being part of the planning board. Haven't worked on the working group, the MBTA Communities Working Group for the past, it's almost nine months now. You know, we were meeting bi-weekly the last time we went around. We're now on a weekly meeting, K was, so, and the demands are very high on that. So, I've enjoyed doing that. And then that's on top of appearing in planning board meetings, select board meetings as well, to keep updated on what we're doing. A number of years ago, when my kids were younger, I was a cup master for the, one of the local cupscout packs here in town. That was, put a great deal of demand on my time while my kids were young. And I was able to do that, I thought, fairly successfully. Now, again, we only have one full-time in the house at this point. I've gotten the blessing from, I refer to her as the Minister of Divestive Affairs, my wife. And she's fully supportive of what I'm doing. And so, you know, I'm fully prepared and ready to commit to the time demands. You know, Matt talked about being prepared in advance. I absolutely have to have everything down when we're meeting for the, you know, as part of the MBTA Communities Working Group. There's an awful lot to digest in a very quick, very short period of time. That's what the planning board does bi-weekly and they're already doing it. So, you know, I'm prepared to commit to that and I'm really looking forward to it.
Well, that's great. And of course, the message being that there are other volunteers already on the board and they're looking to you to be there for the forum, be prepared and participate. So, because it is a team effort in a way. So, I appreciate both your answers on that. Speaking of demands on your time, you're both involved in other volunteer activities in the town, particularly boards and other boards and committees. I'd like you to maybe speak a little bit about those and without belaboring the point of how you're able to do so much on the volunteer end, maybe just share a little bit about your other activities and their liaison assignments typically from the planning board to other boards and committees in town. So, Matt, let me start with you, since you're already on the planning board. Do you have liaison assignments? Can you tell us what those are and how it's going?
I do. Thanks, Brian. As of right now, I do. I have one liaison assignment. I'm on the sidewalk and bike path committee. And I'm a very new member there, so I'm not going to take any credit for all the work that the sidewalk and bike path members have been working on for the past several years. And when I say that, for anybody who gets the Clipper, you've probably seen in town that the committee was successful in getting a grant for the sidewalk on Washington Street, which was desperately needed just given the human traffic on that street. And I can't take any credit for it because the applications were in and submitted by the committee pretty much when I was just joining. So, that is the one liaison committee that I am on. That means a little less frequency. That's once a month. And, you know, the time commitment is significantly less than the planning board. But it is good because it, you know, every meeting usually, or every other meeting at the planning board, we will have liaison committee reports. And we will all, each planning board member is a liaison to, you know, several, you know, one committee, but there's several committees, other committees, you know, subcommittees or committees, you want to call them, in town. And it's a way for us to stay involved and get different perspectives. And we actually just had a, you know, shook it up a little bit and we voted on our liaison appointments on the board and some members switched and some members went to other committees. So, there is flexibility on that perspective too. If there's members on the planning board would like to maybe be on a different committee than what they're on, there's, you know, I think we do that on an annual basis, or at least that was the first time I've seen that. I'm assuming it's on an annual basis. So, it is, it's nice to see because a lot of the liaison, they're not as forward-facing as the select board and the finance committee or the planning board. A lot of that work goes on behind the scenes. And until you see an article in the front of the Clipper that, you know, the sidewalk and bike path committee, due to their work, got the grant for the sidewalks. But that, there was a lot of work that the committee members did behind the scenes that took a while to get that grant. So, that's, they're well worth the time and it does give a little bit of a different perspective to bring back to the planning board from whatever committee you're on.
Steve?
Yes.
Would it be safe to assume you'll stay with MBTA?
Community.
He doesn't have a choice. Because that's a weekly meeting. It's through June.
Yes. It is a metaphysical servitude.
We would all be in big trouble.
So, yes, I'll certainly continue with that.
And that's more than enough, by the way.
Thank you. Keep kind of looking forward and I'm not going to be in any way presumptuous, but, you know, looking forward to the time when this, when the, when this particular task is finished. You know, coastal resiliency is one that I really want to, really want to focus on. I touched on that a little bit earlier. They, I put that on my talent bank form, that's something that I'd be interested in doing and I absolutely want to take a look at that. Folks have already reached out to me. They wanted to recruit me to be part of the task force themselves. I said, please, no, not yet. But I would absolutely want to engage with them and liaise with them to the extent that that's not already being done. And if not, doing so informally. Also with the Affordable Housing Trust as well. They have a heavy lift to do, obviously, in the town of Duxbury where affordable housing is needed. Affordable housing of all different kinds. I would absolutely want to be liaising more closely with them and getting a closer connection between the Affordable Housing Trust and the planning board. I think that's an important nexus that we need to develop further.
All right. Thank you. Before our next question, I have administrative question of the library. Do we have a hard stop at 7:15? Okay, great. Because we're running, we're running right on time, but I, some of these questions are open-ended. So, I want to make sure we're, all right. Thank you. And now, back to our program. So, I'll ask each of you, Matt, why don't I start with you, open-ended? What do you believe that the top three pressing issues are for the planning board right now?
As we stand here today?
Yeah.
I mean, A1 is the MBTA Zoning Act. It's, I think that probably goes without saying, just because of the potential financial impact that could have. Now, as Brian clearly pointed out for everybody at home and in the, we are, we're interim compliance now. But the vote in June 16? June, is that the date of the special time in?
Oh, I should know the exact date. It's right.
It's in June.
June, middle of June. Going to have a significant impact on the town. And one way or the other, whether it passes and potential building of multifamily or housing in town, or whether it does not pass in the financial repercussions of that. And one thing to be sure of and not to get in the MBTA zoning discussion, just because it passes does not mean that multifamily units will be built.
Very important.
Very important. And I, you know, that will come up in the public discussion, I'm sure. So, the answer, so I would say MBTA zoning is one. The second one is, I don't think it's ADUs because I think those will work itself out, but I think it, without a doubt, is addressing more housing in town. And that is inclusionary housing, that is affordable housing, it's senior housing. Or, and when I say affordable housing, I think a lot of people just automatically assume 40B. And that's not so much 40B, but I look at myself as if I was 15 years ago when I moved in the town. I don't know that I could afford as a young family to move into Duxbury. As we stand here today, it's, it's a lovely town, we're very happy we moved here and when we did, but it's a high barrier to entry. And I think that's one of the issues that we're going to need to somehow address the planning board over the years to allow younger families to come in. And the flip side of that is to allow seniors to maybe move out of their regular houses and stay, but stay in town. And we talked about this earlier tonight. Where can they go? Whether it's an ADU or whether it's condominiums or townhouses that get built. That's issue number two. And then I think issue number three, I think we'd be foolish to not say climate, coastal resiliency. Just the rising sea levels and where we are, whether it's private homes or whether it's, you know, the limited commercial space that we have is on the water. There's no way we're not going to be able to have to address that from a planning and a zoning perspective. But I think we would be very short-sighted to ignore that, ignore that issue to our detriment over the next, you know, decade. So, if you had to, if I had to list three, those would be, those would be the three.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Surprise, surprise. MBTA Communities, absolutely. That's front and center right now. So, as we sit here today, that is the most important issue I think that the planning board is confronting. Matt, you downplayed ADU. I would probably even emphasize that a little bit just by virtue of the fact that we are, you know, at this moment, we're exposed because we don't have a bylaw in place that can help to shape or limit some of the potential abuses that could come from just this blanket mandate that's been imposed on us. So, that's critically important. Of course, you know, it is time-limited and it will play itself out. But as we sit here today, I think that is critically important. And I did touch on it earlier, I'm just kind of skiing behind that here, but resiliency. Absolutely critically important. There are a tremendous amount of assets, you know, commercial assets, you know, historical homes, far more important than any of that, though. We have families, we have children, we have lives who are in the path of all of this. And we need to be very thoughtful and very careful about how we assist these people, these families with coping with the climate change that, you know, we're just not going to be able to stop. So, critically important that the planning board be involved with that.
Great. Thank you both. Do we have any questions from the audience online?
We do not.
We do not. Any questions from the audience here?
Yes.
Please.
I don't know if the mandate would be able to include it, but is it possible? I went to town meeting and there was that older woman who said, you know, her taxes went up 70% on Soul Avenue. And we, as almost retired people, have come across the same issues trying to gain or afford to stay in Duxbury. Is it possible to have any of the subsidies include existing houses where seniors live that could apply for some sort of tax relief or subsidies that would be included in those requirements of the subsidized housing that this MBTA is requiring?
Okay. I could probably maybe reshape your question a little bit. But it- But it, you're, you're raising an important question. Um, what, uh, what the MBTA communities, uh, what our, our task is really is. This is oversimplification, but what we're, what we're looking to do is we're looking to, to provide permissions. Uh, over fifty plus acres of land in town to develop this type of affordable housing. Um, one of the, uh, one of the requirements that we will be building into the bylaw, uh, if the law allows us to do this. Is, um, at least ten percent of any units that would be developed under this particular zone, this zoning overlay. Uh, at least ten percent of those units would be restricted, uh, to, uh, to families, to households. Whose income is at eighty percent of what's referred to as area median income or less. So there will be a restriction that those units can only be rented to families and households that need that, that particular requirement. Uh, with respect to things like, uh, you might be thinking of like a, a housing choice voucher or some other type of hu- uh, housing subsidy. Um, the, the MBTA Communities Act and, and what we're looking to, uh, what we're looking to put in front of voters. It doesn't involve directly, uh, any subsidies or any, uh, if you will, rental subsidies that, that residents would be able to take advantage of. What we're talking about is we're just talking about being able to restrict a certain number, a certain percentage of the units that we would be permitting. Under this particular proposed map and bylaw that we'd be, we'd be voting on in June.
And these are only new, new construction?
This, this would be, uh, for, for any new construction that comes from the, uh, from the zoning overlay that we, that we would put in place. Yes.
Are there any existing requirements the town satisfies, um, affordable housing that's outside of the MBTA mandate?
Yes, yes. So, um, I, I don't presume to know exactly where they are. Uh, the Island Creek development that's down, uh, close to three, uh, you know, right next to, uh, group three and three A, close to the Kingston border. Um, there is some restricted affordable housing that, uh, at least a portion of that development was developed under forty B. I think some are all of it. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but there, there is, uh, there is some affordable housing there already. And then there's, uh, there's other affordable housing throughout the, throughout the town of Duxbury. Um, it's, uh, it's deed restricted, uh, to be affordable. And there was some public subsidy that went into them. So that, that's, those are the requirements that, um, that housing has to have in order for it to be counted among that. That subsidized housing inventory that I was referring to earlier.
Deed restricted in perpetuity or, uh, just for the current owner?
Excellent question. Uh, if it's forty B, uh, well, it, it, you would have to, you would have to look at each of them. It's not required that it be deed restricted in perpetuity. Sometimes it is, but it doesn't necessarily have to be deed restricted in perpetuity.
Matt, would you like to go prior on that?
No, it's, it hit a lot of, a lot of it on that, uh, on the head and, and it's right. I mean, oftentimes you'll see them deed restricted in perpetuity so that the owners don't come in and then, you know, buy, able to get it at a lower, uh, rate. And then two owners later sell again for a million dollars. Um, but each, each project that's going to go up has its own documents that are, are public record, which will say how many of the units in the, uh, in the overall development are, uh, deed restricted or affordable, quote affordable. Usually it's at least, uh, twenty percent, uh, in order for qualify for a forty B. Uh, and there are new construction forty Bs going around. I, for myself, I live on Laurel Street and there's one right at the intersection at, at Temple Street that is under construction right across from the end of Laurel. There's going to be a cottage style, um, forty B, which I think at least twenty of the, the units there. I think in all told, it's about thirty-two units that are going in there, cottage style, um, units. At least twenty percent, twenty percent of those will be affordable. Um, so it's not just Island Creek and the apartment style. There are other forty Bs and I think the town. Uh, Steve mentioned it earlier, we're at about seven and a half percent at our, at our stock. And, and until we get to that ten percent affordable housing, the town is subject to forty B developments. And without, you know, much in the way to restrict them. The hope is that any of those forty B developments come in are still within the fabric of the town. But what I mean by that is not a gargantuan, uh, concrete style apartment building that you might see in Quincy or downtown Boston. But something along the lines of what's being built on Temple Street, thirty-two units on the town style, townhouse style row. Um, it's still going to ruffle people's feathers, but it, it addresses a need of, of affordable housing units. And those, those would be new construction. Um, and, and outside of Island Creek, I, you know, and I couldn't tell you the location of each one, there are existing forty B developments where. You, you wouldn't even know by looking at the condos, it might be a forty B. And the whole purpose of the forty B is, it, it, to that point, you should be able to look at a development and not know that. Brian's house is market, mine's affordable and Steve's market, right? And that is the, the, the ultimate purpose of the forty B development. So there are ones in town. Um, for folks, you know, uh, my guess is they probably don't come up for sale very often because if you got in at, 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 uh, at, at a house, you know, at, at, at an affordable rate, many families probably don't want to move. But I would suspect that extenuating circumstances may require a family that's an affordable unit to move. So, uh, and that would be non-new construction, right? Those would be existing affordable units. And then lastly, I'll touch it, but I don't know much on, on, in terms of the, the, the specifics on this. But I believe there are veterans, uh, exemptions for tax credits in town that, that, that.
Phenomenal.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah. And so that's another avenue, but that's not so much in the development side of the planning board.
Does the town of Duxbury itself have any, um, avail, uh, potential to create their own sort of tax structures that's different from what they are now? I guess what, uh, one of the things I'm thinking of is, you know, now some, some of these properties are going for thirty, forty million dollars. And, uh, that may be on a three acre lot, but next to it are two substandard lots. That can't be added onto and, or eighty-eight or, um, any of those things, ADU. And, um, it just throws, you know, the tax base off dramatically for the existing residents. When these new, new purchases are coming into town. Um, is there any, I, I mean, this, I, I know nothing about taxes and it gives me like, you know, if you think about it. To have a, a rolling balance of if you've got a forty million dollar property, that is a different tax base than if you've, you've got a substandard lot, little cottage, um, so that you're not paying that same percentage. Uh, it, it's, I'm trying to feel a way to keep the people that have lived in Duxbury. With their children for years and decades to be able to stay in Duxbury. You know, there are a lot of people coming from even more expensive areas thinking that they get a big, a great deal coming to Duxbury and they'll pay that forty nine.
Sure. If, if I can finish up on that, because that's a little outside what the planning board does. Uh, but, but to answer your question though, it's, the tax rate is the same across the whole town. So it's, it's really based upon your assessment.
Weighted to somehow.
Well, there, there's ways to do it. Uh, the town has chosen not to have, uh, different tax rates.
Change.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then what would the process be to be able to get that?
That's, that's a town meeting issue.
In the town.
Yeah, yep. Um, in the interest of time, I want to give you both an, and thank you for the questions. Um, in the interest of time, I've, what's that?
Oh.
Do, okay. Um, can we, can we do two? Cause we're, we're running a little short.
One. I noticed that Duxbury's area is quite substantial. You know, if you go from three A all the way up fifty-three to Penrose Road and I don't know how far west it goes, of course, east, you run out of land. But I'm wondering, when you say the town of Duxbury, is that a circumference around City Hall or is that whole encompassing area? That's, uh, what I was wondering. And when you do the, um, multifamily housing, if you were to be a little further out. Has there been any consideration given to try and give incentives to get new businesses and to give services to people that are further out? As you know, you're going three percent of our income comes from businesses here.
Right.
And I think that if we gave some incentives and tried to get some business development. Where it wouldn't get everybody angry too much, that it would be in our best interest to at least try and get that larger.
So that's a zoning question. Uh, Matt, you want to give that track?
Yeah. Um, you know, a, as you know, the, uh, and you just hit the head, the, the large majority of, of, when you said, I, when I say Duxbury, I mean, I mean the interior, not just the, the, the area around Hall's Corner or, or anything like that, the, the whole of Duxbury. It is a large geographical.
Right.
Spot. The majority of it, and I don't have the zoning map memorized, but the majority of it is zoned for residential. Um, with that said, as a commercial real estate attorney, mixed use developments are very attractive to developers. However, I don't think they've been overly welcomed in town, uh, right? And, you know, when, if it's a forty B, the developer is there to maximize the profit. And, and most part, it's going to be all residential, whether it's apartments or, or, um, or, or condominiums or, 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 you know, single, not so much single family house, but townhouses. Uh, if a, if, if a developer was just coming in off the streets and say there was some open land, um, I'm not going to pick the Bonjus lot just because that is a, a lightning rod. But if there was an open area of, uh, uh, parcels in, in town where developers said, I, I, I'm not going to do a forty B, but I'm going to do a thirty or forty unit of mixed use development. Um, I, I think, you know, you, you, I think it would, might be well received. Uh, maybe it wouldn't, but I can tell you in other municipalities, they are becoming much more popular because people want to be able to shop where they live. And, and, and obviously what, I'm not talking a Derby Street in the middle of Duxbury, but, uh, you know, some mixed use, maybe commercial on the first floor and residential on, uh, you know, on the second, second floor or, um, something like that. Now, all of that is, is, can it be done? Yes, it can be done. It requires going in front of, likely in front of the ZBA, depending on what the zoning of the property is. And, and either getting an overlay district done or getting, you know, a variance or then coming in front of the planning board and doing site plan review. So there are a lot of, you know, and conservation commission, if there's environmental, there's a lot of steps to be done. But certainly, um, that, that option is, you'll see it in other towns. Now, it's not within the towns, you know, we can't, we can't control that, right? The, the town's not going to develop. We're not, the, the town's municipal, it's not a developer, right? So the, you know, there has to be a developer that, that, that is, it, it's profitable enough for them to, to look at that project. I agree with you. There's geographically, there's a lot of, Duxbury's large, right? There is, you, you could potentially do a mixed use with residential and commercial on the west side of Duxbury or the north side, you know, without negatively affecting the Hall's Corner redevelopment. Um, but we're never going to be, you know, Quincy or Hingham where, you know, with.
I wasn't talking about that.
Yeah.
Uh, what's the far end? Like you go down, way down south Plymouth.
Yeah.
For Long Pond Road, truly far out, they've done a development like this where they have housing, multi housing, they have these little shops for people. So they go get a little bit of sandwich or, you know, some doctors or stuff like that. So if you have some amenities, people will feel like they're out in the middle of nowhere and everybody else is in town in Duxbury. And that's, and that becomes more attractive for people to move in there. Plus it doesn't really affect everybody else. It might be more palpable everybody here. That's what my thought was.
Steve?
Sure. Um, you know, you're not alone in, in, in putting that, that possibility out there. Um, and, you know, but Matt, I think was touching on some, some important considerations that we would have there. Uh, you know, not least of which is, uh, you know, the, the, uh, if you will, guiding ethos of the town, which is for things like open space and, and single, and, you know, single acre lots. Um, one thing that we haven't really talked about, uh, and that, that I don't know that, that Duxbury's really considered this, uh, but it might be something we, we would look at. Um, would be the possibility of like a forty R overlay, uh, smart growth overlay district. That's, uh, something that we, that you can do in Massachusetts. Um, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's basically a zoning over, it's a, it's a zoning overlay that we would put in a particular area to encourage primarily multifamily development. But it also allows, uh, commercial development as well. Um, and substate subsidy comes along with that, um, also. Um, so that, that's, that's a, something possible that we could, that we could look at. Um, and we would have, unlike a forty B or the MBTA community zoning law, we would have complete control within, of course, the, the strictures of the statute. Um, we would have complete control of where we put it and, um, and what the, what the parameters for development would be within it.
Kind of my, my whole idea was to make it attractive to somebody to build this thing. Somebody to move there and some businesses to be there and flourish themselves.
Kind of all taxes are coming.
So, so that'll be more tax base with more, you know, places where people live or tax basis and businesses. And, and, uh, those places have to be maintained. So, I mean, you generate a lot of things if you can work it out so people are comfortable living there. They don't, I mean, if they don't have some amenities and they have to drive real far, they won't really enjoy living there, especially in that kind of develop.
The one proviso is that any sort of zoning change would be then at a town meeting.
Right.
Kind of provo. Um, you know, it's not within the purview of the, the ZBA or the planning board to just create that overlay district. So.
Right.
Sure. That's exactly right.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it was, uh, put to the people who live here in, in the light of what that could be. And that wouldn't really affect them as much if they, if you could figure out a place to do this, of course, I mean.
Figuring out the place to do it. That's the key.
Yep.
And get the support of people that live here, then they could move forward. But I think it'd be a good thing for the town. The town kind of needs that kind of injection.
And you're in the right place to ask those questions because these are two of the guys who are on the front lines, something like that.
That's something that can come to my mind for quite a while there.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, why don't we move to, uh, closing statements? And, uh, Matt, we started with you, so why don't we, uh, end with Steve?
Sure, sure. Great. Thank you, Brian. Um, it, it's been great being with everybody here tonight. Um, I've really enjoyed this. Um, you know, having, having lived in, in Duxbury for twenty-eight years, you know, compared to a lot of people in town, I'm still a new guy. Um, and, you know, before I joined the MBTA Communities Working Group, I really had not done anything in that twenty-eight year period to serve the town. Um, and now I've had the ability to do that and, uh, my appetites have all been whetted, uh, to be able to, to, you know, for a desire to serve the town. Um, and, you know, so that's, I think the first thing that I want to emphasize. The second thing is, um, going back to the mistake that we made as part of the MBTA Communities Working Group the last time. Uh, not reaching out to, to the people and asking them, uh, you know, what do they want to see? What are their preferences? Um, how does that guide, uh, what we would look to implement and what we would look to put before people for a vote? Um, uh, it, it's really a privilege to be able to reach out to the people of Duxbury. Um, we talk about, uh, the school system, we talk about the open space, the character of the town. Uh, those are all, you know, that, those are all wonderful. Um, it's people in the town of Duxbury that really make it what it is, uh, far more than any of those, those other things. It's a privilege to be able to serve the town in what I'm doing right now. It'll be a privilege to serve, I hope. You know, if, if the town is so willing, it'd be a privilege to serve on the, on the planning board.
Yeah, excellent. Um, and, and I'll, you know, I know we're running on, but I'll give a ring endorsement to, to Steve. He would be an excellent, um, addition to the planning board and I, we've gotten to know Steve from coming to the meetings. And I don't think neither Brian nor Steve will give themselves enough credit, I, you know, for people at home and how much work the MBTA zoning group has done on this project. Um, yes, the results weren't what we wanted the last time, or, or, or I shouldn't say what we want. The results are what the results were at the last meeting. I use, you've used the word mistake twice. I don't think it was a mistake. I think you guys, you know, when we've talked about this at our planning, you did so much work to get to the point that we could vote. I'd say it's more, it was just a learning lesson, right? I mean, no, we haven't gone through an MBTA zoning act before. It's not as if we're trying to do an overlay. So, um, that, you know, to over, sorry, to overlay, to use the word again, but to layer on what Steve was saying. Um, it, it is a pleasure. Uh, from my own perspective, um, we've been here for less than fifteen years. Uh, but my wife and I both said, we, this is where we want to stay, assuming that we can and retire here. Um, and in doing so, I'd like to give back and I had been looking, you know, where my skills would be best utilized to give back to the town. And my professional skills in the commercial real estate and in the attorney world and, and the commercial finance was, planning board was, was an obvious choice. Um, and it, you know, it is, it is a privilege to be able to use my, you know, knowledge and professional knowledge to help shape the future of the town. And, um, you know, Duxbury is very lucky to have the residents that volunteer on the mayor's boards. Cause if you look, not just the planning board, in the select board and the finance committee, the ZBA, the, the, the resumes of the folks that served are, are pretty impressive. So, uh, and it's all on a volunteer basis for the most part, uh, you know, and, and the town is very fortunate. Whether you agree with the policies that they, or you don't, we're all very fortunate as citizens here to have, you know, the folks that volunteer on all these boards. And, and I'm sure there's a multitude of other citizens that are equally or more impressive that aren't on boards right now. Hopefully they will. Uh, it took me, you know, fifteen years until I was able to get on a board to, to serve or fourteen years. Um, so I think, you know, the town's very fortunate in that regards to have, uh, the talented individuals or residents to serve on boards. And, uh, I've enjoyed it. I've been there for ten months and I wouldn't have signed up to serve for another five years if I didn't enjoy, because it is time commitment. It is, you know, every, um, every two weeks and there's, there's a review and, uh, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to serve another five years, I'll do the best of my abilities to, to contribute to, to the town that I expect and hope to stay in for the foreseeable future. So it'll directly impact myself and my kids and, and, and who knows, Brian, Brian, so, so, yeah. It's, uh, it's been a privilege and I'm looking forward to hopefully serving another five years.
Matt Ray, Steve Gant, thank you both very much. I think I can say with confidence, uh, that we have two incredibly talented, um, engaged and, um, terrific volunteers who are stepping forward to serve on the planning board. I realize that, um, you're unopposed, but you're, but it's still, you're running. Uh, you had to go get the signatures, uh, you had to go through all the effort. It's not. Um, you're unopposed, but you're, but it's still, you're running. Uh, you had to go get the signatures, uh, you had to go through all the effort. It's not just, you know, a walk on.
No.
Uh, so there's been a lot of effort you had to do just to get to this point. Uh, and from my position on the select board, I can tell you, uh, and and just to echo something you said, Matt. We are incredibly lucky in this town with the caliber and and quantity, uh, of of volunteers who step forward. Uh, we, we would be a much different place, uh, without them. And, uh, you two guys are are going to be great on the planning board. I appreciate. Uh, in advance, well, in ten months plus, plus a couple of years for all the work you're, you're going to do as well. Um. With that, I'd like to thank, uh, library trustees, Martha Dennison and Lustra Lloyd, uh, for putting this together and for the. Uh, library for hosting us this evening and for our audience, uh, for being here in person at home. Uh, and I would like to, uh. Just reiterate again, something Matt, you 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 said what I was thinking, which is, um, with volunteers, uh, we do need more volunteers in town and. The, if you listen to the planning board, excuse me, the select board meeting on Monday, we'll go through the list of vacancies, but, uh, if you go to the town's website. On the forms and documents tab, you'll find the talent bank application. Please, if you have any interest at all in, uh, participating in any of our boards or committees. Uh, please consider submitting a talent bank application. We draw from that pool, uh, when we have vacancies and and we welcome folks to apply at any time. Thank you this evening, uh, and.
Terrific. Steve?
Nice to see you again.
Great to see you.